Call the meeting to orders, Delaware County Council, April 25th. I would like for you to stand and be led on the pledge of the flag by Mr. Dean Lassiter.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any roll call, please.
Alexander.
That was close. Here. Did you say that?
Lance. Here. Ms. Chambers.
Present.
Ms. Lassiter.
Here.
Mr. Matchit.
Present.
Ms. Piper.
Here.
Mr. Quakebush.
Here.
Has the agenda been posted? Thank you. Need a motion to approve the minutes of March 28th, 2017, please. So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Substate.
Mr. Matchit.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Quakebush.
Yes.
Okay, we'll move right along to the financial agenda. Move, Craig Gail, read the items.
We'll start with financial transfer, Ron.
Got financial on the agenda first.
Okay.
Perpetuation fund, this surveyors. Photography and blueprints, $2,000.
Motion to approve.
Motion, Jean Lassiter, second.
Second.
Scott, roll call, please.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Matchit.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Forgot to ask for discussion, but what that is, is a flyover each department. Kind of contributes to that whole package. Okay, next item on the agenda is sheriff misdemeanor, number 1175, 441 account for equipment. Can you motion to approve? Second. Motion by Larry Bledsoe, second by Scott Alexander. Is the sheriff here?
He is.
Would you care to step forward and explain what this is all about? We didn't have all the particulars at finance, so this really doesn't have a recommendation from the finance committee either way.
So the misdemeanor fund is for a transport vehicle?
A $100,000 vehicle.
Great. It, uh, the vehicle itself, the van, is actually only 29,000. It gets a prisoner transport insert put in, which is 28,000. And then you've got to remember that we've got to add on for lights, markings, computers, and all that to go in the van. I have a picture of the insert if you want to see it.
Is this adding one or replacing one?
It's replacing one. The current, it's replacing our big transport van that's on the road all the time. Right now, it's sitting at 256,000. And actually, by the time I get this van ordered, the insert will be close to 300,000 on it. So we'll be getting rid of that van naturally when we get this moved.
You just grab that out, or how do you, you don't trade it in, do you?
Yeah, we'll trade it.
You're going to trade it in?
Yeah.
And the Cajun size is not transferable?
Uh, no, because we're going to one of the new medium-sized Ford vans, the, what are they, Trance, I forget the name of it.
Little highboys?
Yeah. Um, the transit van, we're doing it for fuel economy. So, and then eventually, later on in the year, what we're going to do is trade the other big van that we got and buy one of the little tiny ones. So when we have to go to Pennsylvania and pick up one prisoner, or Ohio or somewhere, they can take the little tiny one and don't have to take the big vans to kind of save the mileage on them.
Just looking to save the county money, Ron.
Well, no, but you're asking for 100,000, and I don't know what the accessories are, but the two items you read off is 57,000. Accessories might be, what, 10?
And that's already out of our money, correct?
Well, I realize that. But what are you going to do with the balance? Is that going to include that smaller vehicle in that 100,000?
At some point it will, yes. When we request money, we request it for the purpose that it is. So if there is some leftover in that, then that will go towards that other vehicle.
Because in, earlier this year, we approved 161,000 in that same 441 account for.
I thought Maggie corrected you on that.
Is that?
I don't know. She said she supposed to use, corrected you on that amount.
She didn't correct me, she just only wanted to expand it a little.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I know it's, you guys know what you're doing, and we don't, but we have to approve the funds. And when something says 441 equipment, that doesn't say vehicle to me as a council member or layperson. So maybe a little more descriptive on that. The sheets that you give us, I've got one here, right here. This sheet that you give us a descriptive on with your request.
Yes.
All it says is 441 equipment, 100,000. Also, maybe if you could be a little more descriptive when you turn these in and save some of the questions.
Yeah, would it be nice to see, and finance committee was just, I mean, what we were asking for, for Maggie, when she was there, just to break down what it is that.
Yeah, the balance in that money is for the jail commander's new vehicle.
Yeah.
That's what that's for.
Well, you didn't tell us that.
Well, I didn't know Maggie put it in there, so I just looked.
She told us it was for the small transport, but she couldn't verify that.
And part of it's for Rick Richmond, the jail commander's new vehicle.
And what kind of vehicle will that be?
He got a plain Jane Tahoe. He's actually driving a pursuit-rated Tahoe that I need back on the road because we totaled one of the new Explorers, so.
Okay. Well, so you want to be, that's a lot better explanation than we had the equipment 441.
I'm sorry, I didn't know she added it in there.
Well.
Where's Maggie when you need her?
She's sick by the way.
She got a sick kid yesterday, now she got it, so.
But I hope you appreciate our position as council members.
We always appreciate you.
You know, we.
Sheriff, there's currently in the fund, what it's showing here is the appropriations of 78-412 that's unencumbered in that fund. Is that, I mean, that's what we're trying to get at, I mean, are we spending 178,000?
I can't advise, I didn't see that, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Which shows surplus funds in the misdemeanor fund of 314015.
Right.
And then the previous additional appropriations, there's the 161 I was talking about.
Okay.
Okay, that's right on air. So the way I'm reading this report, this 100,000 will come off of the 314.
Right. And you haven't spelled the 161? Is that what the?
Is that what you're saying?
Is that what you're saying, Gil?
Right, he's got 78,000 still left in that one, so the 161.
Oh, okay, that doesn't show up on here. Okay. We're just still, once you're going out and buying motorcycles or something.
We already got two motorcycles. Hey, while we're on vehicles, should we go ahead and give you the sheet now?
That'd be great, I guess so. Sheriff's been working on an inventory for us.
Yeah, I'm out to the.
I think that's what you're referring to.
Yeah, I am, I'll watch you guys get it real quick, and then we can go over it, Ron, with everybody.
We could do it later, but if we do it now, you guys can go back to work.
That would be wonderful.
Everybody okay with that? You want to go ahead and vote on the 100,000 first?
Sure.
Let's do that. Let's call a roll for the 100,000.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Matchit.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Mr. Quakebush.
Yes.
Okay, now we'll deviate from the agenda a little bit, and let the sheriff make his inventory presentation.
So Ron asked me sometime back to look at our vehicles and see what we had in our fleet. Since late 2015 until today's date, if you, if you refer back to page three, page three pretty much sums it up. All the vehicles that we've traded in for other vehicles. So there's 27 vehicles that we actually traded for six vehicles, which in a two-year period, we got rid of 21 vehicles off of our fleet. Now, most of these vehicles, if you look down there, you know, had several miles on them. The ones with lower miles was ones that were, for some reason or another, not roadworthy, so that's why we traded them off. For mercy vehicles that go high speeds and in and around curves and stuff, you, they've got to be in great mechanical shape to have. The first two pages is all of our vehicles in our fleet that we have. Midway down through page two, you start getting into our specialty vehicles, which are, you know, our EOD vehicles, which is our bomb stuff, our swap vehicles, our trailers, our PR trailers, and transport trailers. So we've thinned the herd, so to speak, out tremendously over the last two years. And we'll continue to do so to get our vehicles out of here and make sure that all the guys have SUVs to patrol.
I had a question, and I'm sure others maybe have had this from a constituent or two or three, about the fact that, why are you getting all those big Tahos? And you had explained that to me before you did it, so you might just, for the general public to know why you moved to those.
Moved to the Tahoe is because we are county police officers, and it's really hard to get around in the county in inclement weather in a Crown Vic. Many, many times, we've had Northwest come out and tow us out. There may only be six inches of snow on the ground, but everybody here that lives in the county knows that snow drips. And not only the snow, but when we have a lot of rain. You know, a lot of areas that we go to are not always paved, and we are off-road, and you just can't get around in those kinds of vehicles. There's more room, the price difference is pretty much the same, trade-in value, or if you go to resell them, is a lot better than a vehicle. And then at one point, Ford, as you know, they quit selling the Crown Vics, and they went to the smarter, smaller vehicle. Unless we start hiring small guys, we're not going to be able to get them in those little cars.
Any questions, anybody?
How are, I had, you said you wrecked one of the new Ford Explorers, how are they working for you? I know those are less, less money than the Tahos, but are they, are they going to hold up?
Everything says they're going to.
Okay.
When they first came out, there was a problem with them shutting down after a certain speed that you was at, but they got that fixed, and these new ones that we got seem to be the way to go. So, you know, it changes from, from year to year, because Tahos, when they first started selling Tahos, they was at a lower price, and then, you know, of course, National Sheriff League realized that a lot of police departments were buying them, so they jumped the price at about 7,500 bucks. So that's why everybody was starting going with Ford. So it'll switch again.
What's line 31, it says leased?
That is a DTF vehicle that we lease through our money. We have two vehicles that we do through a local dealer, and we lease two vehicles, they give us a discounted rate at 500 bucks for both those vehicles a month. And then what they do is each month, they switch out those vehicles for new vehicles so that people don't always see what our undercover guys are driving.
Thank you.
There was a question on a pickup truck, too, a newer pickup truck. Is that, can you tell us what that's used for?
We had an excursion that we used to do, that used to transport our EOD trailer and our dive trailer, and then our PR trailer and all that stuff around. So all we did was we got rid of the excursion and a couple other vehicles and bought the pickup truck, once again, out of our funding.
People do have their eye on you, I'll tell you that, they ask questions.
Well, I'm glad, I give them answers.
You know, this is a good report, thank you for carrying this fleet down.
We'll start working on the other one as well, for all the inventory.
I think we should recognize the deputy that didn't work, too, while we're at it. Mr. Ellison?
Yes, he didn't even work.
So he just don't sit in his office and do nothing? Well, and I know he's been working on it, I kept asking the sheriff for it.
That's no matter.
Said, well, now he's going to have it, and I know Greg's going to be working on it. I assume that's not the only thing you have to do, but.
I agree, he does a couple of other things.
Yeah, we appreciate it, though, thank you very much. Any more questions? Okay, we'll move right along to assessor's disclosure.
316 pictometry, $5,000. 362 software, hardware, monitors, $1,500.
Will be approved?
Second.
Second by Scott, second by Jessica. Any questions, comments?
As you alluded to before, Mr. Quakebush is.
Stand your name, please.
Oh, sorry, James Carmichael County Assessor. The $5,000 is like the prior, it's for photography, aerofotography, and then we're in the process of replacing monitors in the office of the other account.
You going to tell what you told me?
No.
Sorry, Jim, Greg.
All right.
Any other questions? Well, call freely. Roll call, please.
Mr. Matchit.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Quakebush.
Yes.
While you're standing there, Mr. Assessor, you want to address the next item?
Well, the next item is withdrawn.
Okay, thank you.
Highway Department, health insurance, oh, excuse me. That'll come back next minute.
The bridge was advertised with the highway, which won't work, so we'll have to advertise that for next month's meeting. So what we will be considering is the miscellaneous equipment for highway.
For 67,100.
Correct. Do I have a motion?
The health insurance has been withdrawn.
Yes.
The 4250.
Right. Has to be re-advertised, whose advertised is highway rather than a bridge, so it won't work. So I need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Motion to approve, Lassiter, second, Piper. Comments, questions, Highway Department here? Want to step forward and tell them what this is all about?
What we're trying to do is eliminate waste.
Name, please, or that's who you are?
Bob Jesse, County Highway. I reside at 7,700, he's jacked, pretty much. I'm trying to eliminate waste in money. We spent 65,500 dollars last year for cold patch and a hot patch, which is temporary. The duropatcher is more of a permanent patch, it'll last a lifetime. So dollar for dollar, we need to be going that direction, period.
So this is for another duropatrick, correct?
Yes. We have two, and they're getting, they're getting some age on them, it's time to start replacing them.
Well, if you can, you know, some of you council members may or may not remember, but Bob Adams was superintendent when they bought the bridge, too.
Yeah.
So that's been a while.
It's been a while.
And you told us that finance, you can also use this for crack sealing, you crack.
Yes.
You need to.
The new one, the new one.
The new one, yeah. I know that, I'm just all for crack sealing, and I know we don't do that on county roads, but I think somewhere along the line, commissioners need to address that.
Well, you know, a lot of that is, there's not enough manpower for that, not to do everything that we do.
Well, Yorktown does it, but they hire a contractor to come in with a big truck and do it.
Yeah, they do a slurry seal on them.
They do some every year, and it really makes a difference. It does, it keeps that, it closes the crack, then in the winter, you don't have that salt and mixture and all that creeping down underneath, and then exploding back up, and it makes a big difference. Okay, any questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Matchit.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakebush.
Yes.
Edit, edit project 310. No, excuse me, it's not the project number, it's the appropriation number. $2 million.
I need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Lassiter, second, Piper. I put on the agenda approval of annual appropriation for County Commissioner Edit's plan. This is not a motion to approve the plan, it's to approve the appropriation for approximately one year. Talked with Ms. Patterson, she wasn't sure this would be enough to pay all the bond issues and such that are included in these projects. The commissioners did add one item to their plan, very last item, called Project 61 Improvement of County. I was at the meeting when they discussed this. They'd had a couple of not-for-profits appear before them, community-based organizations working on some of this heroin addiction and other, other psychological addictions, we'll say, and the commissioners earmarked that for that purpose, but no specific reason at this time. It's, it's just, if we approve it, they will intend to use that to reach out into the community, I'll put it that way. So that's what you're voting on today. Do you have any questions about any of the projects therein or such? Chris, you had a question on one when we talked. Do you remember? No.
Really, nothing specific.
Okay. Well, you mentioned the Daleville project.
Oh, the amount, yeah, the.
So I asked Bill Walers to be here if you had any questions or wanted an update on where he's at. You okay?
Yes.
Your question?
He's here.
Yep.
No, I just seen it was a high amount, and you got that big development going on, there's two, there's Project 51 and 59, two different, two different things.
Right, you're in the downtown development, which we've been working with the commissioners and the redevelopment commission now almost four years. You've got two different areas down there, you've got one on the northwest corner, and you've got one on the southeast corner.
You're still in negotiations, is that correct?
The one on the northwest corner, we've acquired everything there and moving forward. Matter of fact, we've had an answer to the RFP. The southwest-east corner, we are, we have it under option to purchase, as of right now, doing due diligence phase one and going into phase two. I think we hope to be completed within three months with the phase two going, with the recommendation, we should be able to move forward on that southwest, or southeast corner.
Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Ms. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Matchit.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Quakebush.
Yes.
Okay, we will move on to the financial agenda.
Transfer agenda. Circuit court, 197 part-time, minus $500 transcript, plus $500.
Will be approved?
Second.
Move by Scott, second by Larry. Any question?
I'm back.
Roll call.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Matchit.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Mr. Quakebush.
Yes.
Thank you. EMS salary ordinance, 144A paramedic, minus 25,592. 144B paramedic, plus 25,592.
Will be approved?
Second.
Move Scott, second, Jessica. I'll point out, is there any questions on this? There are several on the agenda here that are, I accuse Donna of leaving town when these came up, she went on vacation. They're under the old ordinances that we had consolidated and passed a new hiring and salary ordinance, so therefore, these are, for lack of a better word, are rubber stamps. Roll call.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Matchit.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Mr. Quakebush.
Yes.
Jail, A119 correctional officer, minus 25,63745. B119 correctional officer, 25,63745, and this is an old one also.
Will be approved?
Second.
Move by Scott, second by Larry. Question? Roll call.
Mr. Matchit.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Quakebush.
Yes.
Auditor, salary and wages, B112 insurance clerk paymaster, minus 17,52369. C112 insurance clerk paymaster, plus 17,52369.
Will be approved?
Second.
Scott, second by Jessica, and this is under the new ordinance, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, just so we'll know, as you're voting, you're voting for this under the new format. Roll call.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Matchit.
Yes.
Mr. Quakebush.
Yes.
Community corrections, salary and ordinances, HD case manager, minus 15,3979. Administrative assistant, minus 17,73067. Part-time, plus 12,400. Administrative secretary, 1,500. Health insurance, plus 5,37046.
Will be approved? Before I get a second on that, I've got a note here from finance. Before I get a second on that, I've got a note here from finance, why do I have B one fifteen?
Sharon told me I got, we changed that. It should have been, administrative assistant should have been at the end of the number, B one one five.
Okay. And that's going to be thirty-one five? Why do I have thirty-one five there?
That was the salary. That's the salary for this, this person.
So how is our, our, how do our numbers break down here on the low?
I think she's coming up to tell you.
Sharon Cormick, finance manager, three corrections. The, um, it says administrative assistant, it's administrative secretary, she works our front desk. Her total salary is thirty-one five during our budget, which is on the fiscal year, fifteen hundred did not get appropriated into her full salary, which was the thirty-one five.
Okay, the thirty-one five is the total salary.
Correct.
But we're voting as it's presented.
At fifteen hundred she needs, yes.
Okay, I need a second, please.
Second.
Second, Chris.
Yes.
You? Roll call.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Matchit.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quaggin Bush.
Yes.
Human bridge, this is under the old ordinance, equipment operator minus twenty-eight thousand four twenty-six, equipment operator plus twenty-eight thousand four twenty-six, truck driver minus twenty-six seven ninety-seven, truck driver plus twenty-six seven ninety-seven.
You want to go ahead and read the rest of those and we'll vote on them together?
Okay. Um, the overtime is a minus one twenty oh five, the bookkeeper is a plus one twenty oh five.
And then go on down and do the highway thing?
Okay.
Because that's, it's, it's same stuff.
Okay. Highway truck driver minus twenty-five thousand seven ten, uh, truck driver minus twenty-five thousand seven sixteen is what the figure was. One twenty-seven A truck driver is minus twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars, the one twenty-seven B truck driver is plus twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars, overtime is minus one twenty oh five, bookkeeper plus one twenty oh five.
Move to approve. By Scott.
Second.
Second by Chris. That little one twenty in there is, uh, the, the bookkeeper moved from county budget to highway budget. That's to cover that individual's longevity and the salary. Any other questions? This is a pre-new ordinance. Call for the roll call, please.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Matchit.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Quaggin Bush.
Yes.
Public defender's salary and ordinance disability insurance plus one hundred and thirty-two dollars, minus for the witness fees, one hundred and thirty-two dollars.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Scott, second by Jessica. Any questions? Roll call.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Matchit.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Mr. Quaggin Bush.
Yes.
Now I have a.
Thank you.
Go ahead, what do you do?
Addendum to the transfer agenda.
Oh, you're going to do that, okay.
Did you want that?
Yes, please.
Okay, communication center. Um, tag twenty-four thousand two ten oh five minus, and the communications tag twenty-four thousand two ten oh five plus.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Lassiter, second by Bledsoe. Now, quick explanation on this is, is this is, this is under the new salary ordinance. The director of nine-one-one came to the finance committee. We had a nice discussion with the auditor and the human resources director, and this is the way we would like for this to work. The human resources director and the auditor are going to work together with a format to follow so that we can actually approve these line items before the hiring. And that's the way this one is going to work out because Singleton, Paul, I keep getting the wrong. Paul Singleton came to us, uh, kind of on his own, he wasn't sure how to, to fly on this, and it, and it worked because that way we had time to get this on, on the agenda and, and in the meantime, he can be, uh, advertising and getting someone in the position. And he knows exactly what that salary will be and when he can put someone on the payroll. And that's what the auditor and human resources will work together with department head. Soon as they find out someone's leaving, they'll notify him, they'll, they'll let him know how much vacation time they may have or whatever they have accrued. And then they will, the department will be notified as to what date they can hire a new person. And I like communication, as you all know, and I really appreciate having Paul. Paul was a little reluctant on his own right, uh, he wasn't sure, but he was doing exactly the right thing as far as I was concerned. And it helped us to talk about it to the next phase. So thank you, Paul, for that. So I need a roll call.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Matchit.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Mr. Quaggin Bush.
Yes, and I will also point out that I have a letter in my file from EMS. Burke County Council Ordinance twenty-seventeen oh oh five, I'm requesting to post the positions for Jason Kirby and Jeff Benson. So EMS is doing the same thing, they're notifying ahead so that we can unscramble these things before we put a new person in position. So thank you for that letter also, Jason. Okay, now we need a motion to approve the financial transfers and all that good stuff.
I'll make a motion to approve financial transfers with like reductions and to amend the salary ordinance.
Second, I have a second.
Second.
Okay, motion Scott, second Larry. Roll call, please.
Mr. Matchit.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Quaggin Bush.
Yes.
Okay, moving right along, committee reports, uh, we don't have anything on tax abatements that I'm aware of. We don't have any appointments that I'm aware of. Do we have anything from personnel? Human resources? Are we getting close on the base salary thinking? How close?
I was told I'd have it the weekend, I didn't get it, but.
Okay. All right. Get in there. An ordinance, we have a second reading for an ordinance to establish uses for the appropriation from Delaware County Sheriff Interdiction Revenue Account, uh, twenty-seventeen dash oh oh eight. This would be the second and final vote on that, I accept the motion to approve. So move by Larry, second. Second by Chris. Pretty much discussed this as the last meeting, do we need to talk to the sheriff? Anybody? Roll call, please.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Matchit.
Yes.
Mr. Quaggin Bush.
Yes.
Do we have any resolutions? I'm going to ask for one.
He's having Delaware.
Fuck your lunch with you.
Settle in. If you recall, I was here about two months ago talking to you about some of the bills that were in front of the general assembly. House Bill fourteen thirty-eight, which is the needle giveaway, they call it an exchange, I call it a giveaway passed last week. It's now on the governor's desk, I expect the governor to sign it because that was part of his agenda in his inaugural address. What that does is allow legislative and executive bodies of towns, counties, and municipalities to determine whether they want to start a needle giveaway to combat what they consider to be emergency and HIV. And I showed you some of that as packets last time. The governor's task force is this thick, that's a, a study that was done in two, finished in two thousand and sixteen. In that study, what they found was on needle giveaway programs that different people described that they had fired up an average of five times a day before they went and got new needles, and that went up to an average of nine times a day. Okay, so think about that, if you're firing up four more times a day, what do you need? More heroin. What do you need to get more heroin? More money. Where you get more money is to steal more stuff. So that just increases crime exponentially, okay? That was also before fentanyl hit, there, that was based on the Scott County program and the Scott County study. So not only are we increasing almost fifty percent the likelihood of injecting more, we're increasing the likelihood of overdose and death. So the last time I brought you in, just, I said I took the needles out, if you recall. This is exactly what Madison County is getting, giving away, even the bag, okay? I asked some people in Madison County to go give me three of these, uh, I gave one to another prosecutor, one to the prosecuting attorney's counsel, and I kept one. It even comes in this bag, okay? So I want to show you what's in here. And this is what we're going to be faced with when somebody comes in and asks you to start one of these programs, and they're going to, trust me.
Who's they?
Somebody from the health department, it can be a civilian, it can be anybody that talks to you as if the executive or legislative body to do that. Also remember, I'm, I'm asking you to send a message to allied communities, that Delaware County, as representatives of Delaware County, that you don't agree with this, okay? Here's your needles, this pack only had a hundred. Okay, the other pack I gave away had two hundred.
Gee.
This is, nobody brought in and exchanged dirty needles for these. There's a hundred needles in here. Yeah, and the other one had two hundred. Ron, you said you recognized what these were last time?
I told you I was Catholic, I didn't recognize.
Okay. Condoms for when you get high to make more little problems. Of course, you got to be able to tie your arm off to find a vein, okay? You got to cook, so.
Oh.
Two cookers.
You're not serious.
Yeah, yeah.
Isn't that paraphernalia that you get arrested for having a longer person?
If I decided to charge it. So usually you take a twist tie, twist tie around this, okay, so you don't burn yourself. So every time you fire up, these are dirty too, I'm not sure why they don't give away that many cookers. The, these are cotton balls that you put inside the cookers and then you extract your heroin from the cotton ball.
I like all of everything.
Saline, so to help fill your needles.
I wouldn't agree to that.
A biohazard, you put your dirty needles in, that's a good thing. All kinds of an accepted wipes.
Boy, we need to get some of those for EMS.
Band-aids. Cards for Madison County Syringe Exchange Program. Free rapid hepatitis C and HIV testing, syringe exchange, that's a joke. Harm reduction supplies, primary care and substance abuse referral. I'm being told that Madison County is going to shut theirs down, but that's based upon what the prosecutor is telling me, and I don't know what the government sources are. So more alcohol prep stuff, all right? This is enabling.
We'll see, everything in there encourages it.
Well, there's two things missing from this, heroin and a lighter. That's it. Heroin and a lighter. Somebody gives me a lighter, somebody gives me heroin, I fire up right now.
You're talking about a fake lighter.
Yeah, or matches. Okay?
Can I just throw a bucket of matches in there?
I fought against this tooth and nail since December. We figured it was going to pass in one form or another, but I really am requesting that you pass a resolution and say that you as a legislative body for Delaware County are not in favor of Delaware County going to any needle giveaway program. So thanks again, uh, I didn't want you to pass that resolution the last time because it hadn't passed the House and the Senate, but it has, and so. What Indiana's looking at, thanks.
So that's seventeen forty-eight?
Thirteen forty-eight. House can hold back thirteen forty-eight.
Mr. Rogers, do you have something?
I, I do, I, Jason Rogers, emergency management director, director of EMS, I, I just want to let you know, I stand with Jeff on this. Uh, don't confuse movement for progress, and that's what I feel that that program does, is, is just movement. We're just enabling, and Jeff's absolutely correct. I heard a couple people say, mention, well, at least they have those biotech boxes that the needles are going in. Uh, I do think that it's important that you know that we're getting those back because they have no place to get rid of them. Uh, law enforcement and our guys are picking those up, and then we as a county are paying for their disposal. It is, it is. So, um, on average, we're doing between, and Jeff and I were just talking about this in the hallway, one in three overdoses a day, uh, I think is the average, and that's actually down a little bit from what we were a couple of months ago. So I'll, I'll have a report on that, uh, for the next quarter.
The new national statistics came out about two weeks ago, there are a hundred and forty-four heroin overdose deaths. Not overdoses, overdose, overdose.
I saw that on TV.
Eight day in the United States. It is now the number one accidental death for, I think, twenty-five to forty-plus year olds. Number one, above car wreck and everything else. Hundred and forty-four day. So if you go to four, add four times, that's just a study, four extra times of injecting a day, think of how many deaths those programs are going to promote. I could just, I literally could not wrap my hands around that idea.
Also saw another testimonial on TV about the fact that, uh, some of this addiction has been caused by overzealous doctors that were giving pain medication that was addictable and then cutting them off. And people went to the heroin because they still needed it.
Right.
And the doctors are now admitting that they're part of.
Jeff, have you been to the commissioners yet, you know where they stand on this?
I know where they stand because that two of them are law enforcement officers, and I've talked to them individually as law enforcement officers, and they're adamantly opposed to this.
Have you made a presentation at their meeting yet?
I, this just passed last week.
Right, right.
And it's effective, there are a handful of bills that are effective upon signature, okay? Most of them, July third light version, that's effective upon signature. So I'm trying to get ahead of us.
Bill, can we do a, uh, I don't even know if this is possible, but can we do a, a joint resolution with the commissioners?
Essentially, you'd be passing identical resolutions, yes. I mean, you are not a legislative body, they are the legislative body, so it would really just be a sense of the council that, as to what your attitude is.
Do, do we need to have that in written form, or is it something that we could pass right now?
Um, if you can state it, uh, you know, it'll be reflected in the minutes in the, in the manner that you stated, it wouldn't have to be in written form.
You know how you want it stated, does, Sheriff, are you along with this?
I am, one hundred percent.
Okay.
Uh, just that, whatever form that you would say, that you do not encourage or promote a needle. a needle exchange or giveaway program in Delaware County.
I would accept the motion to instruct our attorney to work with the prosecutor and the commissioner's attorney to prepare a document in support of the prosecutor's position.
So moved, don't make that motion.
Second.
Okay. I'll be glad to do that.
I would like to see it say that we oppose it, that, not that we just, we don't encourage it, but we oppose it.
I understand. I do want to say, it was, the whole concept came out of trying to head off an increase in HIV. And it is successful in that, but I think we're mixing apples and oranges. All right. Well, I appreciate you listening to me again.
Well, I appreciate you taking a stand on it. I'm assuming you've been down in state legislature and talked to them during this session, or?
We, I can't remember if I testified on that one or not. I know I was there. I don't know that I personally testified on this in the Senate in the House, but I was there. And we presented a lot of testimony on it. Actually, met with the governor's staff.
Well, it's pretty effective in the way that you present it. I appreciate it.
I really believe that the governor was, got bad advice at the beginning on this. We got some other bills that are similar to what we think has a, an effect on crime. We got two of those to summer study commission. So, we got to stop in, from going to the governor's desk. So, now we have all summer to work on that. And I'll be involved in that. That's what we try to do with that. But after a while, you know when you can't win on these. They get legs and they get, they just go.
Was this a close vote in the Senate? Was not a close vote?
Who was pushing it?
That's a good point. The governor's office, I mean, when the governor says something in an inaugural address that is one of his agenda items, it doesn't need a lot of loving. And the governor's staff and the governor's office was pushing this. We met with them in January, end of January, and thought we could get it to a summer study commission in this. And thought we had a chance, but it didn't work out.
Well, I just learned something this morning that I didn't know. The governor's wife is Judd Fisher's...
Sister-in-law.
Sister-in-law. So, maybe you can work that there.
Well, I did.
Keep the governor from signing the date.
I, he, he's done a really good job, and he is, we've been really pleased. We, as Indiana Prosecuting Attorney Association, have been really pleased with the reception that we've gotten from the governor's office. This just happens to be one issue that we don't agree with.
Well, you didn't present a pretty good case. I don't, I mean, just the idea of that box of a hundred or two hundred, that, that kind of overwhelms you as to what this is all about.
The first guy that went through their program picked up eight hundred needles.
Now, that can't be any good encouragement use.
In Scott County, the needles became more valued than the heroin. When they were trading needles for heroin.
That's just something else to cut along the street.
Yep. Didn't you tell us, Jeff, the last time that they're finding some of these people are migrating towards the communities that offer this program? They're going there to get, moving there and doing whatever sort of...
Send them here.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your...
Hands up. Okay.
Do you want to do a roll call?
I did a roll call on that motion, yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Mr. Madgett?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quakebush?
Yes. So, Mr. Hughes, fix this up.
Will do.
Other business?
Thank you, Bill.
I guess that was other business. Counsel attorney comments?
I have no comments.
Okay. Audience comments?
Keep it your way, Mr. President. We talked about this this morning, and I know I talked to Sheriff. Give a little bit of clarification on the drop program. That addendum, I don't have enough information as far as, with the pension fund was created, I'm assuming it was a contract between the county commissioners and this sheriff's department. Now, would that addendum be to, addendum to the contract for that agreement? Or is there an ordinance on the books that allows the funding and the mechanisms for the pension plan? Because we need that, that drop program approved. And if it's not this body to approve a contract, then the sheriff would have to send it to the county commissioners.
It's in the form of an amendment to the, to the police retirement plan that was approved.
Right.
By this body. So, I don't think it would go to the commissioners.
So, that's not a contract? That's not an original contract? Because all contracts have to be approved by the county commissioners.
You know, that I can't answer why. But the format that it was in...
Yeah, the format. That's what I mean. I'm talking about the original part of that document. How did it exist? Because that's what that's going to be the addendum to.
Right. And I, I... The last, the only document I have other than the proposed amendment is the plan that was approved in April of two thousand and fifteen.
So... I don't think that has to go to the, sorry, John Holder, the sheriff's office. I don't think that has to go with commissioners. That's based off the state law and council, along with the mayor, both approved any changes to...
If that's the case, then I'd like to recommend approval of the program, unless you had had not a chance to review that since the last...
I have, I have reviewed the amendment and the plan itself. I have not been in contact with Mr. Brown, who was the actuary that was here last month. And that was my intention was to contact him and, and make sure I wasn't missing anything. I fully understood it. I apologize, I didn't have that done before this meeting.
I mean, I'm just trying to find out how we need to do to get this thing approved.
I personally read the document of Delaware at this point. I was a little confused. I called Bill and asked him to do what he's agreed to do, is to research it. Personally, I'm not ready to vote on it. I don't know what about the rest of council members are.
I can see anything, but again, there's a hung review of the county attorney for legal aspects for the deputy's and us as a county.
It's not so much the action as, I, I need to understand maybe better how it's going to affect us. Financially, one of the things that came to my mind when we had the original discussion was the comment was made that it would allow officers with seniority to declare they were going to retire in three years and go through this process. It doesn't address what happens when that officer leaves and may be of a high rank. The comment was made that we would be hiring a lower-ranking officer or patrolman, and the county would save money. But from my experience in this government, anytime somebody leaves at a higher rank and somebody comes in at a lower rank, then we start stepping up and everybody gets promoted. So, we wouldn't be saving any money if that happened. So, I don't know whether there needs to be a stipulation in there for a cooling-off period after each retiree leaves.
Where the savings comes from is, if you remember, in two thousand and ten, the council, along with the sheriff's department, mayor, both made changes to the retirement plan.
For the new lower...
With the benefits. So, what this plan does is get those higher-ranking deputies with more benefits out, and you're replacing them with deputies that'll come in under the plan with less benefits. So, eventually, work itself out to...
The promotion would still be through the ranks. It's already there.
Yeah, it's already there. You'll just, another deputy will replace that rank. But the new deputies coming on eventually will start coming in and filling the, with the lesser benefits.
And from my understanding, maybe with the pension people and that they presented the last meeting, was this, this drop cost us nothing. It freezes what that patrol deputy would be...
Yes, again, instead of those higher-reaching deputies stating their full length of time and maxing out their benefits due to retirement, it allows them to get out and reduce their benefits. The, the payment that's on the end of that doesn't cost the plan any more money because that money's already accounted for in the plan anyway. So...
The fact that actually, if they, once they sign up, it freezes them at that point. They're not accumulating another three years, so...
For all intents and purposes, they retired that day, and they're getting their retirement check, just going into an account, an escrow, and then they get that when they leave. So, it's not costing the plan any extra money. Matter of fact, it's designed to be cost-neutral. But how it saves us money is because the new people coming on afterwards is at a lower rank.
Well, what I would suggest, each council member, if you haven't read it, read it again. If you have questions, talk to Mr. Hughes, and he'll be talking to the actuaries with his questions. One of my early questions was, on the very first page, it's, it says that the, the contribution to the... What the heck do I want to say? The retirement fund for the retiree, it's called something. Anyway, it's going to get six percent interest. Well, I don't think that's a very good rate of interest at this day and age.
Well, what we've done, there, that money that's set aside, that's in escrow, there's a, there's a provision in the plan that you, you can actually add interest to that. So, at the end of that period, it would be worth more than what it was. But as an agreement, we, we let that go and just let that zero and let the plan ease the interest.
It's on the first page of the one I have, six percent.
It shouldn't be.
Oh, and I don't want nothing. So, that's it.
Well, I guess as a council, I mean, what's everybody feel about it? Do you want more...
Yeah.
Read it on the law, I mean, because, I mean, I've met with these pension group people twice, and we've had them come to the meeting once to present this. And here we are, three months down the road.
Well, I know you're, I know Larry and Ron.
Well, you had...
Have a standard meeting. So, for the other council members, if you have any questions, I mean, I'm pretty familiar with the plan, so I can leave you my, my number. Contact me if you have any direction or any questions specifically which would be able to, or maybe you're get hold of them with the actuaries.
Well, I've only had one meeting with your, with the whole group personally as a council member. And from that meeting, we were supposed to have a follow-up from the actuaries. Sheriff tells me that they're working on that follow-up meeting to discuss the pension plan along with this. So, I'm kind of waiting on that too also.
I need to refresh myself. Well, I didn't, it wasn't on the agenda today, so I didn't even, I don't even have a copy.
Well, I brought it up because I think, and I'll read it, read it medicine, it will be more clear, I guess, next meeting, is that I thought it was going to be put under review, and we were looking to get this, this one. I don't know. That's how I left last council meeting and when we discussed. That's how I left that. If anybody had any questions, you can get hold of Mr. Hughes, and he would direct them to pension group people.
Well, I, Larry, I did call Mr. Hughes Friday and checked with him to see if anyone had contacted him on this very subject, and he said they have not, and that he hadn't totally finished his review, so that's why it's not on the agenda.
Well, I appreciate an email next time, Ron.
Well, I don't do email very good. I try.
I'm available on phone, too.
I know, but...
All right. All right. I get it.
Larry, would it cause a problem if we table it for another month?
I'd prompt table one month, but I will make a motion next month for approval. Get on your, your packets and read it and ask questions. Yes. It's just aggravating that, I guess we need, you know, more communication within the thirty days between our meetings.
Well, you know, I'm, I'm the president, and I feel like if someone wants to bring it on the agenda, they should contact me and let me know. But as I said, I, I had no council members tell me they wanted that on this agenda.
Well, like I say, I assumed it's going to be on the agenda, per the review.
All right. My remarks are, don't forget to sign your certification of nepotism and file it in the commissioner's office. I brought mine today to do mine. And that's all I have. Anyone else? Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion, Chris, second. James, last again.